Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Board member Drake.
President virtually.
Board member Nysel.
Here.
Board member Steen.
Here virtually.
Board member Van Blarcom. Supervisor De Scapatici.
Here.
So Steen and Drake are on the Zoom meeting.
Okay, we're waiting for a lawyer from Mountain Jam to come, so let's dive into the easiest thing. Fee schedule.
Fee schedule.
Grace mailed these two, I think, last week. It kind of printed out weird because it's on an Excel sheet. Easier to read off your laptop or phone. So most towns have zoning permits. We don't have those. Well, we have zoning permits, but we don't have a fee associated with it. Grace thinks we should have a fee, and I believe, I agree.
Would the zoning fee cover, like, so the advertising and things like that, like the ads we have to put in for public hearings? Those always have public hearings.
Well, not all things that need a zoning permit. Yeah, come on up. Right, because. Right, we don't, we don't have a fee schedule to use for that.
And there's no mail-in system, no public hearing, something like that.
Right. Could you join us a little closer?
Yeah, they can't, they can't hear you.
Please. Would you? Could you?
You're why I'm here.
What else has come up is that we don't have a fee in here, or there, it isn't built in for advertising.
Right, so if they have a public hearing, the average cost is $38 for an ad in the Freeman. We do have a fee, we do charge the people their butters notices for certified mail, which is like, oh, something happened. So that adds up, so they have public hearings. How many a year? 10, 12, 15?
In 2024, we're letting go of pre-26, or voted on in public, so it's around 21, so one assumes there were 21, they say, and there's no issues.
Well, yeah.
You know, I didn't give you guys, I told those increases for planning board or zoning board because I didn't know anyone was board.
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, we're in charge of the fiscal end of things. They're in charge of planning and zoning. They needn't worry themselves over what fees are attained.
So I thought, you know, like you said, maybe a $40, because it's just going to go up, $40 minute, you know, fee across the board when there's a public hearing notice for their project. That would go with the fees of notifying their butters.
Right, we could, could we add it to the butters fee, just put $40 on top of each butters fee, and that would cover that?
Yes, and that's where their building fees.
But you could write, if you, you could change, say, there's that check, so that said they had to agree, but you could add that to that, and then legally.
Yeah.
Or you could simply be just, you could simply increase your fee by, and there's no need to amend, amend.
I think that's what I was.
Well, with the way rates and prices are changing and things have been unstable, we might benefit by just putting wording in the code that says fee and associated expenses.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll last for quite a while.
Never have to update it constantly, every six months when everything changes, yeah.
How'd you word it? Do you say?
Associated.
And associated expenses incurred by the town. Does that sound good, Robert?
Be honest, I'm going through my emails trying to find which document you're referencing here.
Oh, um, you want me to forward it? I have it open.
Yeah, if you could, please.
I'll share it with you right now. My computer's unhappy.
So when we do.
If you could have me for that, for that board as well, I don't believe I have that.
We'll do a public hearing to amend code. Find it. Could you find it tonight so we can make the.
Otherwise, the, the language you suggested certainly sounds reasonable. I mean, we obviously don't want to be changing the, the code itself.
Right. Oh, well, it doesn't have to be, I, you know, it.
All right, you guys can have it in a minute.
It doesn't have to.
Yep, received, thank you.
Unless somebody can find.
Thank you.
Okay.
And right now, the, or especially, the, um, various, the, um, various, the, the, I don't know, this, we keep changing. They're pretty much, I have been lying in their ground now around the other.
Yeah, they don't sound under or over.
No, and when there's additional expenses involved with the reviews for the planning board and zoning board, as far as that's established, that the applicant pays into.
Okay, under the, we do not currently issue zoning permits. What would we, what would we, like, what are we permitting under a zoning permit?
I'm signing off on the permits as they come into the building department to make sure they read zoning code, and that's on the application before Donna reviews them.
All right, okay.
When there was a fee associated, a permit was issued, but when the fee went away, the permit left with it, so I've just been signing off on things as they come.
So since it's come up a few times recently, and there's been discussion, and you just touched on it. What is the start to finish order of applying for permits? And let's assume, because it happens a lot, that what I want to have zoned, planned, built, et cetera, is it a floodplain?
Isn't it a floodplain?
So which, which permit comes first?
Typically, the building permit comes to me. Once I notice it's in a floodplain, it gets forwarded to Donna for her review, and I don't sign off on the zoning until a floodplain permit is issued.
So floodplain permit needs to be, actually, that's not right, have floodplain permit, what's it called?
It's a floodplain.
Flood development. Flood plane development.
Okay. If you're in a floodplain, you cannot get a building permit until you have that.
With a few exceptions, yes.
Okay, why would we have exceptions?
I don't know, you'd have to talk to Donna.
Neither would I, but yes, I'm bringing it up because I'm aware of some instances where it's happened. Okay, and that's why I wanted to clarify. Building permits, you don't, to be issued, lapse, so if there is a plan, yeah, site plan should come first. If they need a variance, that's got to come first. If they need a floodplain certificate, that comes before all that. Building permit means you're good to go, break out your shovels and your hammers.
I will say that often when the planning board is reviewing something that will require floodplain permits, those approvals are with the condition that a floodplain permit be issued.
Oh, conditional, that's, that still works, conditional upon, that still works.
Very rare that a floodplain and then a site plan gets approved.
All right.
Because to ask them to engineer all that, not knowing whether or not they're even, you know what I mean?
Yeah, exactly. And what, do you know what we used to charge, and what year for zoning permits?
The, when I got the zoning position and I started issuing permits again, the last one that I saw was $15. So I was charging $15.
$15? And what year was that?
Tom Burke, or Christie, uh, 80s.
Oh, when you saw it back in the day, yeah, that's 2002, 2003.
So what does that say, 20 plus years ago? So are you proposing we should have a fee again? Is anyone?
I am indifferent. It means nothing to me if there's a fee or not. I would love some opinion about whether or not a permit should be issued, but the fee is not my business. I think, I think.
What does a permit, I mean, you look at it before it goes to Donna to see if it's permitted in that zone.
Correct.
But you're not issuing a permit so much as saying, yes, okay, next stop is Donna?
Exactly.
Okay. So calling that a permit would be a.
A bit of a stretch.
Yeah.
If this board decided that for a building permit application, an application fee is appropriate, that covers something like that. We do not have an application fee. But that's.
I have been in the process of reviewing the building department procedures by talking both on occasion to Donna and Olivia, and sometimes I go in and bother Grace, and talking to local contractors. I don't know how many people are aware, but many local contractors either avoid doing work in Shen Deacon or do it without getting a permit because they find our process nightmarish. So I then took the next step, and I've been speaking to a few local municipalities who seem to have good building departments. And the village of New Paltz's building department has offered to come and do a kind of presentation training session with anyone and anyone who's involved in our building department process. And I would like to take them up on that and see if we can set that up. I'm assuming, while we haven't discussed, that there will be a nominal fee for them to travel up here, or I don't know how we're even doing. But I want to kind of formalize that deal and get it set. Every contractor I've spoken to says that the village of New Paltz does it very well. So and I think we could use a little help, and I think that's pretty clear.
Procedureally.
Yeah, procedurally, yeah, yeah. And it'd be nice to hear from some people who are doing it in what many people consider really well, before we decide what our procedures are going to be.
That would be good.
Well, I could like make a motion that we bring in training for Donna and the building department to spend up to $1,000 in that training.
That's interesting. I'll second that. Yeah. I, I think we should open up to anybody who's involved, who wants to come to it. I mean, obviously.
Anybody, anybody involved with.
Anybody, yeah, the assessor's office, the code enforcement, anybody who wants to. Interested, should be able to come and check it out here and become familiar.
Right.
I'll probably go.
And that would be great. It could take a couple of days.
Yeah, yeah.
For them to assess what we do and how we do it, and try and figure out what would make it better or more efficient.
With them and see what we can arrange.
Great, great, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Kyle and Robert, did you have anything to add to that?
I think that training sounds fantastic.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds great. Hopefully, I'll be able to make it.
Okay. That's one thing. Let's go over the permits again. What else did you find lacking? You were saying mobile homes and modulators.
Is that, is that appropriate? These are questions, that document that I sent are more questions than answers. But right now, we're charging the same for manufactured housing and modular housing, which is basically like a single-wide trailer versus a modular home. They're getting the same permit fee. Is that appropriate? I don't know. It doesn't seem.
Is the foundation cost?
That's a different thing. We're not charging, the foundation cost for a normal stick-built, new-built home is built into the cost per square foot, but for a modular home, it is not.
Because they don't have a stick-built cost.
Exactly, so it's not a square-footage cost, it's just a straight $225, and there's no foundation cost associated.
Okay.
Should there be? There's a question.
There should be probably a foundation cost before the, the entire of a regular stick-built house.
So then it's either moving modular housing into that square-footage fee or adding the foundation cost to the fee. As it pertains to manufactured and modular housing, not to stick-built, no constructed. See how this gets complicated quickly?
Right, but even stick-built housing, should there be a fee just for the, the foundation?
I don't know that that's typical in other municipalities.
Or is it just a square footage?
Well, and this may affect one of the problems that first brought this to attention, that I heard problems from multiple contractors, is how we issue the building permits. We are the only municipality I have ever experienced, and for the record, I have built, I've worked in construction all over this country, on two other continents. Our policy, as I understand it, is, oh, you're building something? Here's your one permit for the entire project. If you go anywhere else in the world, you will get a permit per contractor. You will get a permit to put in the foundation with its cost, a permit, a permit for the framing, a permit for electrical, a permit for plumbing, a permit for the roof. Everything is broken out so that you're holding the contractor, who's doing the work, tied to the work for sign-off. And then you do your fees based on all those things. So when we say it's built in, as Grace just did, we're sticking, the first guy to show up with a, on a, I don't know, it's an average-sized house, is it, is we going to say 2,000 square foot because it makes math easy? He's going to pay $1,000 for a building permit, and all he's doing is digging the hole where some other guy's going to pour the concrete, and no guy that follows him has his name attached to the permit.
Well, I, I do encourage them, I'm not up there reviewing these documents, but I encourage them to collect comp and liability for every contractor, not just the one coming in to get the permit.
But that.
In actuality, is that happening? Probably not every.
Yeah, but it's another reason why, and that's going to affect the way we price them. Because how do you do electrical by the square foot? How do you do plumbing by the square foot? Maybe there's a different way we should be looking at some of the different trades. If it's a 4,000-square-foot house, it may, it's three stories, but never 4,000-square-foot roof. Are we permitting that, so?
Well, we could have, not by the square foot, but we can have electrical as $100, plumbing as $100. And the, the foundation could be just a $300.
Right, but if it's a, like a tiny house, however big those are, what, 100, 200 square feet? Are they going to pay the same electrical permit that a 4,000-square-foot house is going to have? Or should it be tied to the dollar figure of the cost of the work?
Which in my dream world, we get rid of that cost altogether, because it confuses everybody, but I see where you're coming from.
Yeah, I'm, you got a thought? Which way? You were complaining. I, I agree with what you're saying for the record, too.
Phil Moniz. As far as the permits. You can do it on a per-cost basis or a dollar basis. So you'd say the town here, you have somebody like, uh, now, now, if it comes in, there's an electrical inspection. Theoretically, now, now, you're there, there, you're in charge. He should, he should be there for the, for the final. Okay, and then, present everything to the town for it. Okay, when you. There, there, multiple factors like that.
You have footing.
You have to have four footings. Does footing have reinforcement? Is it down, down four feet? Is it down, down six feet? Okay, okay. What's with walls? How, 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 what's wrong? Here, we have another issue. Is the ground still frozen? Is it still muddy? Because it doesn't play, it's not going to set up, you got to wait for soil to rise. When you issue the permit, it comes out with inspection.
Yep.
Okay, okay, and then you get rid of frame and reperment.
Most, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but I believe most buildings are done off of engineered blueprints. And.
Such is true, but who's verifying the engineered proof of blueprints?
Donna. Donna.
And is he going out to the site again, continuously? No.
She should be, they should be calling for inspections, and she should be signing off on them, to my knowledge, that's what's happening.
Okay, okay. And then. Then you just have to figure out the cost basis.
Yeah, I mean, that's, 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 on the one hand, driving to the site and looking at the electrical cost, what it costs to drive to set in electrical, but it takes a lot longer to look at a bigger project than it does at a smaller project, so there's got to be a way to look at the cost.
Right.
You'll do it fair.
Yeah.
Okay. When he doesn't like inspection, are we setting it to wall studs or wood wire? And then you have to, uh, the, uh, to the wall, so we don't have to have demonstrations. Yes, and we have to play, all of these things have to go into that inspection. Is he going to catch it all? Highly doubtful.
And just for the record, Donna was a she.
No, no, I, 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 I get it. I get it. Okay, okay.
But, but, no.
They are true. Our inspectors are true.
Yes, yes.
They are state-approved, state licensed.
I'm, I'm, I'm aware of that, and I've worked with them, and I know where, what happens, okay? And I've never, the inspector tells me, no, no, what I do is a lot more detailed than what they do.
Yep.
Sound, sound, okay, enough, enough said.
Thanks, thanks.
My question here is, there's, there's some discussion here of monetary amounts, and there's some discussion here that's procedural. How much of this can be done in effect by just a change to a fee structure, and how much really is going to require a change to the underlying code? When we're saying, you know, that we're going to do permits differently, or I think this originally started with moving mobile homes away from manufactured homes, is that specified in code, or is that solely in our fee structure? And I'm just simply not familiar enough to know.
I believe that mobile home versus modular, and that's our fee schedule, not our code.
Okay, all right, so that's an easier lift, as it were.
But I, but I still do think that the point you were hinting at is that, yeah, I think we're premature setting fees until we've established what we're actually going to issue in the way of permits, and how they're procedurally going to be dealt with.
Well, we could still do the majority of this, do a procedure thing on the few sticking points that we have, just to get our fee schedule in line with what it should be.
Sure, there seems to be a lot of stuff that still needs to be ironed out.
Yeah.
So it'd be nice to have everybody in the room, in not virtual, to hash those details out, because I think there's a lot of missing, missing pieces here. So it's something on the table until the next meeting. I think that would be helpful, unless we're trying to do something with it tonight.
Well, I'd like to have something tonight to put forth and put it online to have a public hearing for, and then we can vote on it. And if we could just take what's agreed on, or what's written as, this is just an up cost for this and that, and not deal with the, the zoning permit because we don't do that.
I just, I'm sure this email went out, but I know for a fact that it's the first time I'm seeing it, and it seems like it's the first time Robert and Kyle.
I actually believe. People said to Drake, and for Grace to recommend, Grace sent it to Donna and I for our comments, and I didn't realize we were looking to make decisions on it now. I thought this, we were going to do like a cursory discussion, and it would be a process that's going to take a while, and everyone's going to get brought in.
The point being, no matter how hot, three of the five of us have never met on this.
Yeah, I don't think we can make any progress tonight.
No problem, no problem.
As much as I would love to set that up.
Yeah.
That sounds good. Let's move on to Mountain Jam since they're here. Thanks, Grace.
Won't be as much fun without you.
Who's Paul? You could have slept over. You got done late last night.
I'm T.J. Jerry, I have a Mount Mountain, Cheshmaw Festivals. L.A. City.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so we're here today because we want to start the secret process, the project as soon as possible, just giving a timing of the festival coming up in June, and then we're meeting there, and that requires a sort of waiting period to see the process. To light it up and get, get this, to get to town. We want to maximize the amount of time we see you guys before, rather than getting into the secondary. So I asked the guys if you can get it for April, especially if you think we need to start my process. Uh, the first step of that process, as you see, the resolution that provides the board, the request that the town board serves the agency under secret, the parties involved here, the, the town board, or chapter 59, some central government, Ulster County, the O H, State of the O H, as of right now. Uh, the, 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 we don't need any other permits besides that, so. And we're involved, as the agency should say. So the, given the timing and the sort of, the scope of this, we're hoping the town board serves the agency in a coordinated interview, we think is the official way to push this forward. Do you guys have any questions about the solution or about the system?
It's kind of unprecedented for us to lead agencies on something like this. For instance, the last concert that was held in Bel Air, there was no communication between the venue and the town? I'm just curious as to why you guys haven't assessed. Well, thankfully, you're involved in this, because we were under the impression that we're going to be camping, and now it's like we're leading, you see, the whole thing, am I going to interpret that?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, because for a single sort of secret, like, let's go set a project whole, rather than a small portion. So when a whole project has multiple different agencies that are permanent, different aspects of that project, and those aspects are small, we do, we do review, someone needs to step up in the lead agency. We thought, the town is, do that, give this to the, in the town, but we think the impact, obviously, will be worse than town. Well, I think that also, given the timing, it would probably be very difficult to get one of the other agencies step up to the lead agency. And so that. That, that, in my experience, it has happened for many times, where sometimes it's about the control over the secret process. And I've also seen it where agencies that have smaller sort of permitting, purview, reviews, will take the agency over the whole project. And I think one of the benefits here is, it's a little bit of a, a unique project, but I think the benefit is that order as state, already done secret, to operate them out. So when they enter their agreements to do center, to open it up, to, to minimum year-round events. I'm not super familiar with what they do in summer, but I know that type of thing like that, so they've done secret that. For here, we want to sort of suspenders, have the secret, kind of has to come to the entire project, but we can rely on and look to the, kicking back off the secret lines, these things are already made respect on that. Things that we necessarily, in which we can have at our fingertips, just in here today, like they've put the traffic and noise and taxes, maybe just about that part. And then we'll add in the camping as well, obviously, because we want to be a whole, a view of the project. Under secret, there's a provision against parts of projects in pieces, it's called segmentation, and we just want to make sure the town board, and the parts themselves are sort of tech-technical, and the challenges that they're, we purposely, you know, segmented projects, or we use, has less cumulative tasks. So I have a rear, uh, I should, I should, I don't have a cover of all of this point, so it's just my.
Can I ask, who's that outside the red? That's Ben Dale. Okay.
Yeah, and I, I'm.
And you've seen.
I've seen, I, 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 I'm like two hours, so I. So I emailed it, so I'm okay with it, but I want to make sure to print that out, how much, how much.
No, it's fine, I just wanna make sure that everyone...
It was a PDF, so I didn't get a chance to edit it anyway, but Ben looked at it, put these edits in, these two edits, and said exactly what, what's your name?
It's TJ.
CJ?
TJ. So, just to sort of explain, so the first step of the lead agency process is from one of the agencies, that's what I said, lead agencies, but we have to have the third day days for the other agencies to check it. There's only one agency here, that, that anyone's going to check, in fact, they've said the opposite, but they, they...
Who are those other agencies?
Uh, Ulster County DOH and New York State DOH, and, um, order, the Olympic Bay Regional Development Order, the organization that runs the, the map.
So, by us being the agency, that means the DOH is all of a sudden not gonna have a handle? They're starting to involve purposes.
Correct.
So, I just wanna make that point.
And, and, and the purpose, the reason seeker does this is because a lot of projects need permits from all sorts of agencies, uh, and so one person step up, only for purposes of step up. So they can't handle, can't be in your jurisdiction, or chapter fifty-nine, that is your review, as saying as you would cross the territory there. But we still need Ulster County DOH permit, which we're working with Ulster County right now, and a state DOH permit as well, and that covers, it essentially covers pretty much the same things as chapter fifty-nine. So the first step is, which I'm talking to you, the first step is, does any lead agency and then give you the other agency, after the agency no one objects, you're automatically default to be the agency, that's just keep projects moving, because some agencies just have that requirement.
Do we do, or have to do, the seeker first and then the resolution to be lead agency?
So, the resolution, all the ones, I just adopted that resolution, that just sort of allows the day to set them, but we kind of want them to be days of the last...
Well, I'm sorry. What do we end up doing as the lead agency? How much, how much time is it gonna take and who's gonna do it? The who's gonna do it isn't for you, that's for us. But what is involved as being lead agent?
Of course.
Yeah, what's in it for us?
I was having a laugh.
So, what's involved is, um, we would start off by, if no one else, if you guys adopt the resolution, no one else checks, and now you're the agency, we would have the, we would allow out part two of the EBA, which goes through the environmental considerations that need to be looked at to complete the secret process. So any agency has responsibility to look at the environmental considerations in the part two, and determine whether there is a significant adverse environmental impact or not a significant environmental impact. And at the end, if you go through those considerations, you would adopt a declaration, and the declaration don't go in one or two weeks, it's either positive declaration, which would fly wires to a full environmental impact study, or a negative declaration that says, you know, what these access do not think that this is a, this has potential, this has a, this has adverse environmental impact.
So we, we need someone, and I'm saying this because I wanna know who this someone is, who is qualified to look at those environmental considerations and make those decisions you just said. I don't know that I myself personally am, so I'm wondering, who is, who would actually do this for us? I have no problem with us being lead agency if we have someone who can actually responsibly...
Our attorney.
Our attorney would handle it, yeah, okay.
Well, it'd be, well, because it's really, and you're exactly, it's not the word, to under chase the secret process, but you have your attorney there, and then you have your town staff to help with that, question, totally, right? Uh, what we do do is, I would fill out part two, for my ranch, but the information necessary for the party, and what's really helpful is, we'll put together a summary that goes through all of the environmental considerations that you require to look at, and then we'll pull information relative to that. So if the consideration is traffic, then we'll pull in the information from the project to sort of activate the teachers and look at that, and what, or to have it worked out. So we'll basically consolidate the facts, and then the project relevant information for you, which relations each one's kind of happening. Right, right, big, 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 fish fishing.
Alright, so in, in, follow up on Pete's, what's in it for us, I will now slide it into, and all of our costs in getting Ben to do this are billable to someone else? Or are we spending a lot of money to get this done?
Uh, no, we'll have to work out an escrow account and have that, all those fees that we need to pay. I mean, under, not just a twenty-five dollar fee for camping, we'll need a...
There's a lot of people getting mad at me for that.
A hosting, a hosting fee.
Okay, yeah, I will discuss that. We just had a couple of minutes.
No, that's fine, that's great, great. That's gonna be the big one. As well as, who's gonna do it and how are we gonna pay for it are the big ones that everybody here in this town.
Both the seeker view and the chapter fifty-nine assembly per review, or just the secret issue?
I think they're a very different scale, but probably yes.
Okay, I would say the seeker's probably gonna be a lot simpler than, I think, the part two.
Okay.
Very, very similar.
Okay. We've done those forms.
Unless we stop the lot of danger rattling habitat that's what she's asking.
Yeah.
And we just, we just wanna make sure that our costs are covered.
I'm asking the questions for the people at home watching TV.
So, the things with all the ambient please, they've got that somehow, so they're gonna give us those costs.
But that's on the page, yeah, that is nothing.
So that's, so what we would ask tonight is that you would adopt our resolution, basically since we were announcing essentially our intent, that we said to spread the notice that we want to lead agency, wait for the other, uh, we don't throw our system, so we can put a draft notice in there, we'll mail that out, we've got it, uh, to all those agencies. And, um, then maybe we would appear at the next town board meeting, provide more information in those with the part two, and we have like two meeting days, one of which I believe there's gonna be an information session or a...
We're gonna have a public hearing. On April seventh. Then, then...
It sounds like a regular discussion meeting, or is that a special?
No, that's a regular.
Okay, so April, so that's... April's the next meeting. So we'll be back at the next meeting for the information session with, uh, the client as well, uh, so we can obviously answer some questions, provide more information.
Make another presentation, I just thought I had a formal, uh, we announced it last couple of weeks ago, our first...
So, if I can switch to you.
With Gary?
Oh, that was not a bad... Do my best. What do you mean? Uh, but, the switching gears a little bit, so that's the secret process, chapter fifty-nine, uh, it's kind of, it's kind of a new beginning situation, um, because the threshold for your mask outing permit is five hundred, and I think that was because the stakes are so high, it's five thousand, so the town obviously was like, well, they've got three or four thousand, they're still a lot, you wanna step to a low threshold. So they kind of mirror the process to coordinate or to compare with chapter fifty-nine, so there isn't a lot of sense, it's what we're doing with the state. So one of those sections goes over all the agencies that the town board apply to get approval for. And so, a lot of, almost all of those agencies were already getting approval from our state permit. So DOH is part of that permit, when they have our permit, then they reach out to all of those agencies. So I just wanted to point that out, just so, not having enough time, we just didn't want to duplicate them necessarily, getting approval for these, or getting approval for them through DTH.
Right, and we could just say that you're approved for the mask outing.
And, and, and what I'll do is, I'll put together sort of just like a chart, it's in there, to show you in our permit, we're working on those, way later, you're getting approval for them. Just so you guys have a piece of mind, that everything's been booked by our process.
Alright, there, there was considerable concern last time, when you were here virtually, uh, about us taking on seeker for the whole project instead of just the campground. Ben, our lawyer, is now okay with it.
Well, I don't think he is.
No, he wasn't, he's okay with it, with us taking on the whole thing. I just think, I wanna be clear on why we, why some people weren't okay with it, and some people would trust those things, and I believe some people who weren't at the virtual ones, that's why I'm speaking up. Do we, do you feel that Ben is taking this over, and you guys don't have a copy of this, do you? And you emailed this to Robert? Yeah, oh, yeah, the, Robert and Kyle are on a Zoom, yeah, we don't have a fancy Zoom set up yet, but we're...
So, so my, my, my concerns are, I think, two or threefold. The one is that these documents, uh, you know, honestly have not read, they were, you know, received ten minutes before the meeting and haven't gotten any sort of public posting whatsoever, uh, and so a resolution that comes into the meeting with, with no, you know, public documentation, I think is, is problematic. Also, yes, I, I, you know, I appreciate that it's not as challenging of a process as we might think, nevertheless, we obviously have some expenses associated with our lawyer, and that escrow account, I think it would be nice to have at least an agreement in, in principle on, on that amount. At this point in time, um, you know, the, the county party has not agreed to escrow, right? We've discussed sort of conceptually that that might work, but we don't have an amount, we don't have an agreement, um, so I think that's, I see that as a challenge.
I think we should, and we should talk about this right now, have an escrow of about ten thousand dollars, so generally, Ben thinks that should cover any legal fees that they have.
So I think, I think that's fine, but I, I guess what I'm going on with this is that if we vote on this in the April meeting and these documents are available publicly and we have an agreement of escrow contingent upon us becoming lead agency, I, I feel very comfortable with that, but again, these are documents that, you know, were sent ten minutes before this meeting that I clearly have not read, nor could have, let alone members of the public.
Well, I mean, there is, typically we want forty-eight hours. Yeah, so that it needs to be posted publicly before we can vote on it, I mean, some might or others makes difference, but this is...
Yeah, I don't have a conceptual issue with us being lead agency, but again, I think because there were public concerns at our last meeting, for us to, you know, then vote to approve that when the documents have not been available publicly, have not been sent to the board with much time to evaluate, presents a complication.
Do we want to think about a, a meeting next week?
I mean, I'm not trying to unnecessarily burden the, the process, I do understand that there's some timeliness to that, but again, like, I firstly don't think I could, I could vote on this.
You just do a way to shorten that thirty-day time by going directly to the other two agencies and asking them, is that...
Essentially, every agency, technically speaking, correct, under the law, every agency that's set tomorrow, that...
Is it only the two agencies, county, state DOH, or are there more?
This is the whole list of agencies that, I'll talk about this one, sorry.
We put it out in the...
I didn't see this.
They're listed in chapter fifty-nine, and at any point, town boards said, no, we want to get it for that, just in their own security service, just because I want to be next to the downtown, like, now we can't give them... That's just everything that potentially got it, but right now, we don't need permission for the town, UCDOH, state DOH, uh, we don't need a permit for the border, which is...
So it's this thing that... Pine Hill would be the right one, instead of me, so, yeah.
So can we, is this an April or another meeting?
I don't know if Pine Hill can agree to the, um, escrow, sorry, thank you.
I think to Robert's point, I'm, I'm pretty much in agreement with that, you know, obviously we wanna make sure this happens, we wanna do it as efficient as possible, we also want to make sure, you know, if it's something that we push off, I'm agreeing. Joyce, we've had a lot of meetings, we needed that in the next meeting, concerns like they had, not that...
I would not want a whole...
April seventh would be the ideal. Okay, so, um...
And if the thirty days, May seventh, does that still give us enough time?
April is like, as a month, but...
April seventh to May.
April to May, maybe.
Yeah.
Well, the first is Thursday, so...
And that's why, that's why we're here. And then you need to check eight, that's the whole ten days.
So the main meeting is on Friday.
Right, the main meeting is less, less every day, it's nine or seven, I don't know.
I just...
Yeah, no, that's, yeah. I, I don't know.
I mean, we could do a lunch...
So, would it be okay, um, just to call Mike, please, if I can answer you guys just now, instead of just pushing it off? Uh, just two minutes?
Sure, you can get answers as far as the escrow stuff, I still don't think that answers a lot of those questions, starts about Dr. I don't know, on a resolution that has had a...
I have to agree with that, um, like, like, like they just said, you know, we just received these documents, I mean, I, I really want this to happen, I really do, but I just wanna make sure that we're crossing teeths and dotting i's here, I don't know if you guys can hear me well or not.
We can, we can.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and I think we are, that, that to be completely open and upfront and transparent.
There's no sort of tactically leads to getting it to you guys at the last minute, it's just discussing, trying to get this with Ben, trying to get these, and a lot of these meetings are sort of trying to...
No, we're not pointing fingers here, we're not...
I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, not at all.
So, you know, as far as, you know, the town board essentially could just designate themselves as their ten, ten to be lead agency and authorize me to issue it without authorization, I mean, it's not...
It's not, it isn't a big thing, I mean, nothing comes down on us if we're lead agency.
Right.
The way I read it and understand being a lead agency, we can just say, at any point, we don't like this project, it stops here.
Correct.
Yeah, and there's no more... Yeah, it's essentially, yes, it's essentially what you do the same deal that you have at chapter fifty-nine, having...
Yeah.
It doesn't lock you in, it's a force of action.
This doesn't approve the project.
Yeah, Robert, do you want to go with that?
It certainly doesn't approve the project, but it does potentially incur legal costs, right? And, and to your point of being, your understanding of the, the seeker process, again, these are documents that I haven't looked at, you know, that's, that's my fundamental concern here, is attempting to approve a document, you know, there's a resolution in there and I'm seeing it with markups, and I have not read this resolution, I mean, that's, that's the fundamental challenge for me, it's, it's a, it's a time issue. And, again, I don't wanna be unnecessarily, you know, burn some of the process, I would love to know from, you know, your client if that timeframe has some flexibility to it, um, but personally, I would like more time for you to view the documents.
It's not a, a client issue, I can set a meeting with you guys at any time, I just didn't want to unnecessarily drag you guys back here for a special meeting. The timing issue between April and May is the fact that there is not thirty days between those two meetings, and we need thirty days to last, and so that is sort of the whole purpose of coming tonight, is to try to get, uh, not to set a schedule at all, it's just that was the intent of coming tonight.
No, 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 I appreciate that, and I know you've been working really closely with Ben, and, and, you know, it's just a lot of work in a short period of time, I mean, what I'm sounding like is that if we did push this to the April meeting, that isn't necessarily an issue, but we would need to have an additional May meeting that was at least thirty days afterwards, um, is that, is that accurate?
Right.
That sounds right.
That's correct.
Well, but, could, could we not do a meeting before the April meeting and then still hit the May meeting? I mean...
So, I, I, either a late March meeting, or a...
I know, I know. It's a two-hour drive. If we look at our calendar, I can recommend some D and Bs or a hotel.
So there's either the 20th or the 27th. If we keep it to Thursday.
Thursday, the 20th is the A night.
Is it the A night? So we have to be...
Yeah, I decided the other night we really should have planned May.
So the 27th. Unless we just don't pass this, do it after New Year's, where we're...
I'll do the 27th.
What's that?
27th, right?
I am free on the 27th, yeah.
Tuesdays, okay, if we have the 27th, Tuesday can work for me as well. But if, if the 27th works for everyone, we can just do that.
And I prefer that.
I guess night is probably, probably better for everybody.
Yeah, Kyle, if you're used, it should play better, usually. Oh, good for you. All right. But evenings are better for Kyle. And me now, actually, evenings are better for me.
The main meeting is, which day is May?
7th.
Okay, so it would be 39, May 83, March 27.
So that's good.
So March 27?
Sure, sure. But we're still coming for the public hearing.
Right.
So, and then that's kind of what's great, which is then you hear your comments publicly here, hearing for purposes of job shopping, I'm a person who's a...
Right. Okay.
So March 27, the Thursday at 6:30?
Yeah. And just for clarification, I mean, I can answer any questions, any questions that you have on the AM or about the description of the project or anything like that, the resolution and the notice are typically just void locally, are used in every project. Just kind of...
Also, we're giving a resolution a few days. If I post it by Monday, it's fine.
Yep.
And should we post the notice also or just as a matter of fact, just a resolution?
The notice is shown to the general public anyway, because they're, the general public, the citizens participate, they see through the public hearing. That's their chance to come up with a decision. We have these, we support the project, we give any committee space around certain projects.
But before the 27th, we need to post this, just...
Yeah, in the next two days. We have to bring that in for a special meeting.
And moving forward, which is just a way for... But I appreciate you guys, at least now, at least...
Who was the lead agency when Mountain Jam was in Hunter?
That's Kyle's team.
You guys get it?
Hi, Kyle. So I don't, I don't know that it's possible that, I mean, there may not have been a seeker if they didn't need a permit to host the event. So I don't know if they have local zoning. Okay, I'm getting signals that they don't. I'm reluctantly saying that I'm more than half sure that I don't think that there was permitting involved with that.
What I was able to tell by looking historically was that, that that town did not have zoning. There was a county health department, so the permit would have been...
Can you guys say that?
The permit would have been the state DOH proposed.
Pretty quiet.
I'm sorry, you might just like, they, Robert...
I can, I can agree to that.
My understanding was just going against the order, I was, and then our office was just basically, I don't know, I don't know. Hunter didn't have zoning.
Number one.
Green County doesn't have a county health department. So the two permits that would be issued would be part seven dash or mass gathering permit, which would have been done by New York State Department of Health, most likely the only entice of the office. The second permit, which is the part eighteen permit, would also have been done by State Health. That might have been a little bit more the mayor, the county office, the DOA, and that's the EMS pay piece, which is their contribution for public services for mass gathering. I'm sorry, sorry.
Public service for 5,000 people.
It's the EMS, the EMS piece. So you've got the environmental health piece, part seven dash, or you've got the EMS piece, part eighteen. Both State Health Department. Both, okay, happy, happy, by that, not that. So this one, this one would be chapter 59, I suppose, of town for the campings, part seven dash, or county DOH, for both the events and then, and then New York State DOH, for the part eighteen, public, public, for the public service, the EMS.
So, 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 join me, I'm sorry, if there's only one part, if there's only one for the agency, so they were, in fact, they were, well, there was no agency, they were just the other agency.
Correct, correct, they're tracking the number, 13, 14. I apologize, I remember this one. Public functions, it's a book, I doubt, so that would be the New York State Department of Health. And, you know, I mean, that, in this particular example, Mayor, for DOH, is, whereas, also county, county, this is part seven, seven, four. And that's modified in seven, four, as far as the 30 or so things, 25, 30, that, that E and F can face to me.
Does anyone have any other questions even concerning chapter 59, the camping park rather have Allen here?
I think Allen has her concerns. I'm sure she has her concerns with people in town, but the number of success has not sat out a little while, but we'll talk about that later.
All right. Anything else you'd like to add? Okay. Very good. We'll see either you or somebody on the 27th.
Thank you.
May I come to you?
Do, yeah.
All right. Sorry about this. The other round is a dangerous area. Okay, it appears that, we're trying to circumvent something. A lot of people up in the high now that are certainly concerned, okay? I don't probably know right there, if I have, have to, but the dangerous area. And it just appears that this venue, it's been very covert, okay? Came through 5,000, 8,000, I heard 24,000, over 10,000, 2,000, 3,000, 4,000, number, it would be nice to be transparent on this whole procedure, okay? I spoke a little earlier on this, a couple of, I just, you know, here. There are safety concerns. There's only one way out there, okay? That street, that downtown road, if it's on water, at night, how are people going to walk? Okay, there's, the ditch is on the right, the ditch is on the left, okay? The road is dark, there are lights. We don't have... In this town, 13 police officers, some part-time, along with some full-time, okay? I know you're going to have to hire county, or state, or both. And then there's this issue with these nets. All right, if the mountain, the dangerous area, all of a sudden, you're joining the property next door, something doesn't sit right here. Okay? I had a conversation with state trooper, and someone, I suppose, other areas, really between things, and it's not really the venues themselves that are of our concern. He goes, it's the safety after and during what happens. Okay, I was talking to somebody on the side of the road next to me, and he told me that there's going to be cannabis nets. And I know it's legal, I get it. But, again, is this just hearsay? Or is it not? Do we know? Okay, do we not know if all of these permits are more than satisfied when they have to come to Mr. Martin's 70th meeting? Okay, all of your requirements are more than satisfied at that point, all right? People in town need to know.
I just want to say, what, we've talked about scheduling and having multiple public hearings. We're not voting, we've made a very clear... So I think tonight, I think tonight's not the night, I'd like to stick to the agenda, if that's at all possible.
I just, I wanted, I wanted...
You've already explained, you've already had this conversation, Peter. I know you've already spoken up about, I really would like to come back when the public is here to hear your comments.
I will certainly be here for that.
Okay, I think that's the time for this.
All right.
Believe me, we all share these concerns, and we're aware of them, and we want to discuss them with the public at the scheduling of public hearing.
My point, I just, I wanted to hear about it, so we'd be able to, unfortunately, I couldn't hear you guys ask my name after me.
To answer your question about the cannabis nets, they were visible on the mountains presented last week. Okay. They are...
It's been talked about from the beginning.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, we're in two months. Fair enough. We're doing two months.
And I will just say, everything you complained, you want us to be transparent about, you're aware of those things, and we actually just shut down, make an decision tonight, so we can be more transparent and share more with the public.
Which I do appreciate. I heard what you said.
Okay. I mean, we still have questions too. So anything you have an answer, because we still have questions.
Which is good. Tells you that everybody's going to be in charge.
I wish we had more solid answers and information, but it's, it's a big process.
And we wish we had a couple of moments, but it's unfortunate, it came on.
And here we are, we're, I don't have any case we're out.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, less than 90.
Yes.
We're just overnight.
Should get a big, big, big...
Have a good evening.
And just for clarity, the promoters have to have a long list of things done by March 21st today, department and county EMS, they have further permits for their mass gathering. So by the 27th, but that by the 27th, we'll know all that stuff and whether it's permitted before we even take the meeting.
That's it. Thank you.
Do we want to talk about the school? Again, I want to have all talk to their attorney, work out some kind of contract that we can look at, whether a man did edit, just to get a rough start. They're offering us the school for the year.
Well, with, for a maximum 10 years with no purchase.
Without any agreement, of course, because with the purchase included, then they would have to go for a refund.
At the school board.
At, at, not this, at a school board.
Well, but so the only reason to rush it is to make a decision now instead of at their next school board. We have no reason to rush it. They want it.
They want it. They want it done.
Right, understandable, but I don't think they jump on to... I'm not sure, I want to, even though I don't think there will be inordinate legal fees in this initial process, I don't know how much more I want to put into it until we at least see, we have the inspection done, our commercial appraiser was there, we should have it back from him in a few days. He said it would take about three days to write it all up and put it together. I, I don't, no, I'm not...
What is this rental agreement? Does that allow us to rent space to anyone, or is that still a public?
No, no, we haven't got the answer, but Paul will get that answer before.
I think we need those two answers. Let's get this initial appraisal report back, let's get Paul's answer. If the appraisal is, guys, we're not going to have to spend $4 million on this building, although Luis may also take care of that, and confirm that we can rent it out.
Order a contractor on the 27th?
Order a contractor on the 27th. Yeah, I think by then, we should have both those answers, right?
27th is a very, very...
It's going to be a fun one. I'm going to bring a problem.
That would be...
Also, so, so, yeah. Yeah, sounds good here.
So, you want me to ask Paul, just to clear it up, if we can, if we're leasing the school, can we rent it out to other people?
Yeah.
And to anyone, or is there a limitations on...
Exactly, that's, that's...
But I think, I think this is all moving in a very good direction. I think we hashed out some of my mind deals, those all the concerns, so...
Yes, yes, I mean, no matter what, we're going to end up in a...
Yeah, of course.
Can you specify Duncan Donut? We could make a lot of...
Not in this town.
Not in this...
This is not that...
Okay, okay.
Resolution 50-25, resolution starting in press grant 27776, construction of a natural playground, seek attention action. End of adoption.
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Two items. Resolution 5125, support for the Ulster County Legislature's adoption of Resolution Number 102, establishing a policy to fund facilitation of transportation, support the augmentation and operation of local emergency medical services in and for the county of Ulster, and move it to adoption.
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
Resolutions 5125, resolution to amend contract for Glenbrook Pavilion with the Brian Hummel Homo roof, move it to adoption.
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
Any other discussions?
I wanted to bring up one.
They emailed about Rick.
About Rick, yeah, I want to talk about that for a minute.
I understand we're not on an executive session.
Right, but I think expenditure of public money, we can talk about here, we're not going to get into many of your discussions. I understand that we have recently hired someone to take over all of the assistant work for our water superintendent, but we are now talking about whether or not to pay a voucher for work done by someone who may or may not have been told that they were not supposed to be doing the work. I feel inappropriate not to pay for the work since the work was done. I'm not pleased that our initial plan was not adhered to the way we would have liked. I think we need to, and I think this will now be handled through that process, but I am in favor of paying for the work that was done. I second. Robert, Kyle, you have a good comment?
Yeah, I agree as well. Yeah, I think all that makes sense. I think the only, sort of, and we all sort of know this, is obviously, we need to have a conversation with, with Rick, and possibly Jameson, and go over the responsibilities.
Yeah, that needs to be clearly defined, to protect everyone. Yes, thank you. Okay, and I've got like nine minutes left in this Zoom call, so. Our second one of the night, if you're keeping track, people.
I was looking at a Rivian, or the Rivian website, and please, somebody else look also. We have $50,000 in our Nerser grant that will go to a vehicle, the least expensive Rivian I found, and there's none older than 500 miles. There's 735, or 7355. Uh, there's seventy-three five, or seventy-three fifty.
We're buying them.
Well, so, so just so I can add that, so when, um, Beth won the Nicerda award, there was, uh, one of the awards was fifty thousand dollars, but it was limited to one of four categories. Um, purchasing of electrical landscaping equipment, which we already applied an award towards, heat pumps, which we already have earmarked for awards for, and, uh, L E D lights, which we already have in town. And so, um, we did the resolution where we earmarked it for an electric car. It does not strictly speaking have, uh, have to be a Rivian, but because it's replacing a town vehicle and has to be a replacement for a town vehicle, the vehicle that it appeared to be replacing was basically of the like, like SUV variety. Um, now, we can make some modifications, uh, to that, but fundamentally, unless we want to buy fifty thousand dollars worth of electrical landscaping equipment or, or heat pumps, a car is kind of the only thing that money can be used for. Um, and just procedurally, there's, it's, it's a sort of an extensive process, we need a, like a written quote, for lack of a better term, for an electric vehicle that then gets sent to, uh, Nicerda for approval. Um, now, obviously, that vehicle needs to be greater than fifty thousand dollars, otherwise we have to, you know, give up part of that award. But the goal, of course, is to not have it be too much above fifty thousand, because the difference would be borne by the town.
So we're trying to price it out, right, where it seems to be a lot, a lot in any way.
Right, okay, yeah.
Unless we're doing that down. And that's another question, do we want it?
So, I, I wasn't able to hear, how much was the cheapest Rivian, sorry, I think I just cut out, out there.
Seventy-three one fifty.
So, I can check with Nicerda on this, but we did allocate, I want to say it was thirty-five thousand towards heat pumps. And in part, we did that because again, those awards came in and there's only four things that we can apply them to, and obviously a seventy-five hundred dollar award wasn't gonna go towards a car. But we may be able to allocate some of those small seventy-five hundred awards towards the vehicle. Um, I want to say there was two seventy-five hundred ones, so that would get us to sixty-five. So if we were comfortable, I could check, I don't know whether that's possible, but I'd be happy to check if that's possible. But obviously, if so, we would still be on the hook for the difference, which would be, what, like six or seven thousand above that?
Yeah, we do have some extra money in our, our funds that were interest that we've got over the last couple of years, around twenty-five thousand dollars. It's not, it's not that we don't have access to front costs.
Well, I, I think the question is, if, if folks are comfortable, I, I can check whether some of those other smaller awards could be moved to the electric vehicle if we were comfortable fronting the difference.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Again, or alternatively, we look for a cheaper vehicle, um, I'm not that familiar with E Vs, I know when we took a search, it was, you know, it was done pretty quickly because we had to close out before Nicerda ran out of money, actually, I mean, that was the.
But there are other, uh, I, I think we should, I think we should look.
I have a, yeah, I mean, I just.
I mean, for the average, with the full crew cab, it's like a thirty-five, forty thousand dollar electric pickup truck. The F one fifty considered, I think, fifty-five? Um, I think, I think we might find there are alternatives, uh, it'd be great.
For cheaper vehicles?
Yeah, cheaper vehicles, I think, I think this is worth, a, a quick process, a little due diligence, um, if we can get this vehicle without spending more than a couple thousand dollars in town money, I mean, landing in exactly fifty is pretty slim chance on that one, but, um, I think we should look at it before we. I'd love it, they're cool, I like, I like these, yeah, nice one, yeah.
Do we have a timeframe that we need to do this by?
Twenty-twenty-five.
Okay.
So, I mean, we've got plenty of time, but we have to complete the sale before twenty-twenty-five, otherwise I believe we lose that money.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have a little time to shop around.
And soon, just.
That's, that's a lot, yeah.
All right, I don't, I don't have anything else to conversation.
No, I think.
I think I'm good. Make me a. Go ahead.
Second. All in favor? All right. Bye, guys.